Hello everyone, thank you very much for joining us. I think a few of us are coming in now. Brilliant. Perfect. Well, thank you very, very much for joining us. We'll start on time. So today we have Alex and Amy with us. Amy's from Peterborough City Council and Alex is also from PECs. My name is Lauren Cox and I'm one of the project coordinators working at PECs, which is one of Peterborough's sustainability charity or the Peterborough Sustainability Charity. And at PECs we work across lots of different projects from tree planting to bridges and to the one that brings us here today called Blueprint to a Circular Economy. So this is an interac funded project and it's all about creating workable action plans to help reduce, reuse and recycle and design out waste as much as we can. And so as part of this, we've had some brilliant blueprint champions join us. And these are members of the Peterborough community who are helping to increase recycling in their area through different events and by sharing information. And they have gathered some frequently asked questions around recycling, which we will be posing to Peterborough City Council this evening. And so with that, I am joined by Alex, who is on the techie side of things today. And we almost share the same type of role, but yeah, she'll be helping out with the Zoom side of things. And we are also joined by Amy from Peterborough City Council. And I wonder, Amy, would you like to just give yourself a quick introduction?
Yeah, sure. Hi everybody. Lovely for you to be all on board this webinar this evening. And my role within Peterborough City Council is the senior Waste and Recycling Officer. I work within a small team and my main role is to manage the contracts where all the waste that we collect from both the curbside, the household recycling centre, the bulky waste, all the different collection methods we have. I manage all the disposal contracts. So I make sure that we recycle as much as possible, sending all of those waste materials that we're collecting to different outlets for reprocessing. And as well as that, I work with the team to sort of put together the strategy of how we deal with the waste in the city. So trying to encourage more people within the city to recycle their ways we use and looking at different ways to reduce the amount of waste that we ultimately end up disposing. So yeah, that's that's sort of in a nutshell what I do.
Brilliant. Thanks, Amy. And thank you for joining us tonight and for all your help with the project so far. It's been really great having you on board. And I know we've had some streaming issues in the past, so just to avoid any disruptions, I think it best we turn our cameras off whilst we do the Q and A and we can turn them on again just at the end. But for everyone attending today, if you have any questions as we go along, please do write them either in the chat or in the Q and A button. I'm not sure what you can see. And we'll try and answer them at the end if we have some time. Otherwise, we'll answer them afterwards offline and we'll put them on the PEC website. So without further ado, we'll just turn our cameras off. And shall we see what the first question is? So Amy, why should we recycle? I think that's probably one of the first questions we should answer. What is the point of me taking time out of my day to put a plastic bottle in a recycling bin? What good does it actually do?
That's a really good question, Lauren. And there's so many different reasons why recycling is important. And I mean, I think everybody who's probably on this webinar here has got a keen interest in the environment. And that's probably one of the most important things that we that we try and focus on is, you know, it's reducing the impact on the environment, the natural environment. Quite obviously, recycling reduces the need to use raw virgin materials. And so by, you know, when you put that plastic bottle in the bin, you know, we're capturing that energy, that resource that's still in that bottle when we're recycling it. So rather than having to go out and use raw virgin materials out of the ground or wherever, whatever item we're looking at. And so by not doing that, there's another really good environmental reason is to protect the natural ecosystems that are out there in the environment. It's really important that we don't just go mining for all these different materials that we then use to make these these products that we use in our everyday life. On top of that, it saves energy. You know, it's really important, you know, in these days that we look at, you know, energy and the carbon impact that it has. For example, using recycled aluminium, producing sort of aluminium from raw materials is very, very energy intensive. By using recycled aluminium in the process, you're saving about 95% of the energy that you would use from using the raw materials. That's really, really significant. And I think lots of people don't actually realise, you know, that impact that it has on the environment from making those materials from scratch, basically. So as well as as all of those really, really important environmental factors, it always comes down to finances as well. And it's really important to focus on this because it's, it helps us fund the recycling in the city and because it's actually a lot cheaper to process recycling and it's got a value, which I think lots of people often forget, you know, those those recycling bottles, they're not waste to us. We see it as a resource because we can actually help fund our services by using the value in those materials. For example, to to collect, process and recycle all the items that we place, you residents place in your green recycling bin. Currently, due to the high values of those materials, it only costs us £4 compared to nearly £100 to process the residual waste that you put in your black bin. So it's a significant saving there.
Oh, yeah.
Because the value of the recycling offsets all those costs. So yeah, so it's it's really, really important. And I think that message is just, it's so valuable to get out there to residents for them to understand. You know, recycling is really, really important for a number of reasons.
Brilliant. Yeah, it seems like it's a kind of a manifold benefit, really. You've got so many things that it's good for. But I suppose there's still a lot of people that aren't necessarily confident about what happens to it. So what what happens when it gets taken away? Surely recycling can't just be a bit of a myth.
No, definitely not. I mean, if you if you focus on the items that you put in your green bins, I think everybody, I hope everybody on this call uses their green bin. You know, all of those items, everyday packaging items that you've got in there, they all start in the journey by being collected by the refuse collection vehicle. And then they go to a facility in Fenn Gate where we basically do a quick visual check on them to make sure there's no items in there that we've not asked for or that are going to cause problems along the way that might harm some of the other recycling that's in there, like the paper. There's often items that we don't ask residents to put in there. So we do a quick visual check on them and remove any items that we don't want. And then the next journey is they go off to a MRF, which is a materials recycling facility or MRF. So we've got lots of acronyms in waste. I'll try not to baffle you with too many and explain them along the way. And at the at the materials recycling facility, that's just north of Cambridge. And basically, there's a lot of conveyables. There's a lot of machinery, technology within this facility. It's 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 an amazing place to go if you're really interested in recycling. And basically, at this facility, we've got the plastic, the card, the paper, all the different items that we ask you to put in the bin are sorted by a variety of different technologies. Some are hand sorted, but very, very rarely these days. A lot of it is actually done by different mechanical processes and technological items that can pull out all the different types of materials that are in your green bin. And once they've been through the process, then we've basically got a whole set of materials sorted into their individual types. And once that has been done, they go off to the individual reprocessors where they're actually go through the recycling process. So at that point is when they're, say, for paper, for example, would be all mulched down, a lot of water be added to it, and then it goes through the whole process where it's made into a new paper item. So yeah, that's that's in a nutshell what what happens to your the recycling that you put in your green bin.
Amy, so actually, when when people kind of, I know I've had family members who just say, oh, it just all goes to landfill anyway. Whereas actually, there is a whole process behind this, well, loads of processes by the sounds of it, which again just adds to that whole economic model as well, that it creates jobs. It's natural industry, isn't it, that whole recycling thing?
Yeah, definitely. It's, you know, it's like I said previously, we don't see those items as waste. We see them as a resource. You know, they're they're future items down the road, aren't they? They're not something that we just want put into landfill or or burn. You know, that that item is then lost. They're a valuable resource for the council and and for the and for the planet. You know, we don't we don't want to waste resources, as we talked about before.
But you said, Amy, there's at the material recovery recovery facility, you said there were items that you didn't want. And we hear this word contamination a lot. And so I wonder what what does that contamination actually mean? How can you contaminate your recycling? And when is something too contaminated to be recycled?
Well, there's there's two sort of prongs to the contamination issue that we have. The first one would be when somebody actually puts the wrong item in the bin. And it doesn't necessarily do a massive amount of harm, but it's just not the desired item that we would want. So for example, if somebody had a small electrical item, that item by going in the bin is not going to cause any damage to any recyclable items that you've placed in the bin. But it's just the wrong item. It's not the right place for it to be. And then the other the other example that we use is is contamination when it actually causes some harm to the recycling. And this is probably the worst kind because it's actually causing damage to some of the valuable recycling that's in the bin. So for example, if you put a baked bean tin in that you hadn't fully rinsed out and it's still got some of the baked bean sauce in there, that's got the potential to then spill out into your bin on some valuable paper or cardboard. And when that paper or cardboard is contaminated with a food item like that, it loses its value and it would be rejected. Because it, we want clean, loose, dry recycling. We don't want it damaged. So yeah, it's really important to actually look at the items that we're asking for and and try and stick to those. And also think about the items that you're putting in there because, you know, we don't want items with food on them. We want nice, clean, dry recycling because it's simple as it keeps its value.
Brilliant. And I know we've had a question before where I suppose the the black bin bags, if you see a black bin bag in a recycling bin, is that is that a problem for contamination?
Yeah, it is a problem because we can't see what's inside it. We've always said if you have extra recycling or your recycling collection, if you've got to put your bin out for any reason, we can take that extra recycling, but we need it in a clear bag. Because quite often we will get residents who are putting black bin bags out with their recycling and and they don't they don't contain recycling. So, you know, we could end up with a bag that's in there that's full of nappies. And that's, you know, that's one of the items that's probably the worst offender because it drops into both categories. So you know, it's something we're not asking for, but also it has something inside it that has the potential to do a lot of damage. And it could really spoil good recycling. So it's really important if you have got extra recycling that you put it in a clear bag, a black bag is just, you know, it 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 gets to the recycling facility and it'll be pulled straight out if it's not already done some damage along the way.
Right. I think that's a key takeaway, I think, for myself and a lot of people. And you mentioned about, so the first type of contamination is putting the wrong things in the recycling. So clearly, there's lots of items that could go in the bin, but what common items can't be recycled in our curbside bins?
I think we've already touched on a few of them and, you know, we're talking about nappies. To me, that's quite obvious, but it seems to be one of the worst offenders that we really do get in the recycling bin. I'm not really too sure why. But then there's there's other items that are still, there's a bit of a confusion over, say, for example, like textiles, because that's an item that can be recycled. But the problem with it going into the green bin with all those other items is once it gets to the material recovery facility that we talked about earlier, it's going through a lot of machinery and it's not designed for textiles. It's designed for sort of your household packaging. And that those textiles just get wrapped around all the different machinery that we've got at that facility and it's just not the right place for textiles. So I think sometimes residents just think, oh, I can recycle that. I know I can recycle and textiles can be recycled. I'm just going to pop it in the bin, not actually probably realising what impact it would have. And and by doing that, the likelihood is those textiles will, you know, they'll get ripped, they get dirty. And once a textile item has been in sort of proximity to some glass that has the potential to break, you're going to get small glass fibres into those textiles, rendering it useless. It wouldn't be any good for recycling. So it's really important to remember that only the items that we're asking for on the list, things like textiles, there's so many other options out there. You know, charity shops, I think probably every week I'm getting a bag through my door asking for textiles. Textiles have got a really high value as well. So some companies will actually pay you for them. I think there's a couple of companies in Peterborough, you can take your your textiles and they will actually give you some value back because they're so valuable down the line for other people. And I think in in sort of the climate we're in with a lot of disposable masks at the moment, people are thinking, oh, maybe I can pop that in there, that can be recycled. And also glass, there's some there's some types of glass that we don't actually want. We're asking for your glass bottles and jars, but then things like Pyrex, the sort of cooking trays that are made of Pyrex, mirrors and broken light bulbs, people quite often pop those in there. So it's just a reminder of, you know, not not just thinking, oh, I know that can be recycled, I'm going to pop it in the bin. There's lots of other ways that we were asking people to recycle those other items because we just can't sort every item that you might come across in your household. Even though it could be recycled, we just can't actually physically separate all of those items. So we have to focus on the main ones.
Yeah, definitely. So there's definitely lots of different ways. As you're saying earlier about all those different processes to recycle certain items, there's there's all the different processes for other things as well and other materials. And on materials, actually, there's there's a lot of compostable and biodegradable items out there now. What what do you do with those? Where do they go and how can we dispose of them?
There's a lot of confusion around compostable and biodegradable. So to clear up what they actually mean, I think is really important so we can understand how to actually deal with them. And are they actually a good alternative to some of the plastic items that maybe they've replaced? I mean, if you if you start with compostable items, it basically means they're likely to be made a natural resource so they can actually break down and be used to make compost. So some some compostable items like coffee cups, they will eventually break down and they're made of a natural material. But the problem that we have with those in the sort of the bins that we collect from the curbside is we don't have a route for compostable items. The reason being is that item is going to take a long time to actually break down. It could take years. And the processes that we use to compost our garden waste, the food waste, they're only going to take up to six weeks. So they go through an industrial composting facility for the garden waste and an anaerobic digestion facility for the food waste. So those compostable items are not going to break down in the time, even under the pressure and the heat that they are in those facilities. So it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a difficult one because they're maybe not as environmentally friendly as as they've been sort of marketed as by some of these companies. So I quite often get a lot of questions, where can I put that? And and the answer is, you know, the only real option for a compostable cup is your home compost bin. And that is going to take a long time. So, you know, if you're filling your home compost bin with these cups, it's not really going to have the desired effect. I appreciate that's probably not what some people want to hear, but you know, it's an important factor in looking at making the right environmental choice on your buying products. And I think that's what we're asking residents to do is, you know, to have all this information and ensure that they can make a sort of informed decision and be part of the process and be part of understanding how things work. I mean, with biodegradable, all that means is it's capable of breaking down. So biodegradable items will break down within the environment. They'll they'll probably have a little bit of assistance for some bacteria or some living organisms. But it doesn't necessarily mean that they're good for the planet or good for the environment. I think lots of plastic bags have been marketed as biodegradable. And all they'll do is over a matter of years, it could be up to 20 years, is break down into sort of smaller plastic bits or just sit in the environment. So the message we try and give is, you know, don't always look at buying those single use items. It's it's basically ditch single use items and choose reusable alternatives. So coffee cups are the prime example. They're quite hard to recycle, there's sort of work going on in the background. The reason they're hard is something I probably should have touched on earlier is they're basically a two-layer material. So I think if most people know when they're they're looking, buying a coffee cup, it's got basically a cardboard outing, but inside it's coated with plastic. So it's what we call a composite item. And they're one of the most difficult things for us to recycle because they're a mixture of two different materials. Lots of the materials in your bin are one, one, one material, your paper, your card, your plastics. So they're the easy items. But when we're talking about composite materials, they're really hard. And then that's where we have a lot of, a lot of the problems of being able to find markets and ways to recycle those. So yeah, the message I think to take home is, you know, usually reusables, don't try and avoid these single use items and and try and avoid them becoming waste in the first place.
Definitely. And I think that, Amy, comes back down to that circular economy as well, isn't it? It's they've, there's a product that's been created that is designed, I guess, to not be waste as we know it, the conventional waste. But then the process hasn't necessarily caught up, the waste management side isn't there. So that circle is still incomplete, I suppose, but actually reusable items as well within the loop. So that's good. I'm just conscious of time. So the next couple of questions are kind of linked, I suppose. And what do we do with larger items that can't be recycled? And and what happens to them afterwards, I suppose, which goes to the next question as well?
I think if we if we look at your sort of your larger items that you may that you may have, say, for example, some furniture or some children's toys. I think the first place for people to go is, you know, is to to work out, can that item, you know, carry on being an item with somebody else? Can it can it be reused? Can somebody else find some use for it? And I think it's really important for people to not just think, oh, I don't want it anymore. I'm going to throw it away. I don't, I don't want it in my house. It is really important to just think, well, you know, I think somebody else might want that. And I think that's where you know, your Facebook Marketplace, your Freecycle, charity shops and, you know, even local community groups, you know, can they find any use for these items? And I think, you know, myself, I've sold quite a few items recently on Facebook Marketplace. It's so good, you know, people want those stuff. And I and I think we had this discussion previously, didn't we, Lauren?
Yeah.
Even just items that you thought were of no use to anybody, just pop it on there, even if it's free, you know, a couple of pounds. You know, there's lots of items out there that people want and can make a use of. So I think it's a really valuable message and tool for people to actually take some ownership and rather than just think, I'm just going to take it down the household recycling centre or I'm going to book a bulky waste. I just want it gone. You know, can we actually do something with it? Can we prolong its life to stop becoming waste?
Yeah, definitely. So the, I guess, there's the, I've seen on the screen here, there's the Household Recycling Centre as well. So I guess a lot of the items could be taken there. What what happens to those items when they go to the household recycling centre?
And some will actually go to a reuse scheme that we've set up recently with the charity. And they will actually do some work and repair these items, you know, there'll be electrical items, toys. They'll actually do work in their workshop and then they'll sell them on. So there's always an avenue. There's always some way that we can, you know, keep prolonging these items and prevent them from becoming waste.
Definitely. I know we've had a question before. We'll just quickly do this example. But for example, wood, again, there's this myth that wood is just again thrown straight into the energy recovery facility. Is that is that true? What happens to wood?
No, it's it's not true at all. We separate the wood out at the household recycling centre. If we didn't want to, we would just put it in with all the other waste and yeah, it would go next door. But, you know, that wood has got a value. It can be used again. Some of it is what we call clean wood, so it's of a higher quality. And some of it is not dirty, but it it's had some, you know, varnish on it or something. So we've got two grades of wood that we're dealing with. But yeah, they're both recycled. So basically, what happens to that once it's picked up from the household recycling centre is it will go to a specialist wood recycling facility and it's sorted into the clean and dirty wood. And then it's basically passed through a shredder. So it's all chipped up and the wood becomes fines and all the metal parts like the nails, the planks of wood and all the little hinges and doors that might be, you know, that might be on a door or a cupboard, they're all removed by magnets, pretty simple process, and they will be recovered for recycling. And then all those different finds are split by their quality and then they'll be reused for different materials. You know, that fines can be used to make new wooden boards such as MDF. But, you know, lower quality items might just be used for bedding for horses and other animals and things. So, you know, we're stopping, again, the virgin timber being cut down and used for all these products. So yeah, no, it's definitely a valuable resource for us and we don't burn it in the EFW, which is 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 a common thought. And I understand why people would think that, but no, we don't.
Brilliant. That's good to know. And again, it comes back to that massive process behind the scenes that we we just don't necessarily know about or think about. And you talked about the value of recycling. What what is the economic value of some of the materials that go into recycling?
And it's quite significant, really. It varies from item to item. I mean, some of the most valuable things in the in the green bin at the moment are plastics. The value of the plastics has increased significantly recently. And we can actually obtain anywhere between £360 to about £600 per tonne for the plastic items, depending on the different polymers. Because there's often lots of different types of plastics in the bin and they're all separated into their different polymer types. So for example, a plastic bottle is usually made of what we call PET. And but your milk bottle, you'll see, is slightly different. It's it's not so clear. And that's made from HDPE. So those two different polymer types, as we call them, have a different value. But they are very valuable to us at the moment. And also is not as valuable as plastics, but we have a lot more of it in the bin is the paper and the card. And they are a significant proportion of the bin. And I think people are definitely ordering more goods off the internet and they're coming in cardboard packaging. So the amount of cardboard in our bin is significantly increased. And it all has a value. So yeah, it's 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 really quite scary how much that is worth at the moment. But it's good because it's making, you know, our services, we can offset the cost of our services and stop council tax increasing, all these really important things that actually a resident will start to see. Because, you know, the more we recycle, the more money we save, basically.
Brilliant. There's another reason to recycle again. And there's loads of reasons. And we've got a minute left. I think if we go to what what's happening in Peterborough and what can people be doing to increase recycling? I know we've had a question through to us saying, can we actually do more to recycle items from public bins? So what generally is your advice and what's been going on in Peterborough?
At the moment, we're going through some sort of challenging times with regards our curbside collections. I'm sure many of you on the webinar are aware of the driver shortage that's currently happening in the UK. And unfortunately, that has had a significant impact on on the council and the drivers that we employ to drive the refuse collection vehicles. And unfortunately, we've had to suspend the garden waste collections. And it's not a decision that we've taken lightly at all. And it's it's a really difficult decision because we want to provide that service to residents. But obviously, over all of the services that we provide, you know, winter's coming, it's not so much of the growing season. We've had to take a difficult decision that we hope has the least impact on residents. So unfortunately, everybody's garden waste collections are going to cease until January next year. But what we have promised is that all the residents that have subscribed this year will be getting a full refund. And we will do one last collection before the winter. So nobody will be left with a bin that's full. We will collect everybody's bins. And the schedule's on the council website and that's being updated daily with links from our social media. So if anybody on this call wants to check when they think their bin is going to be emptied, you just look on our Facebook, Twitter and you'll you'll find all the links on there. And something else that's really important that's sort of been happening in the background Um, and something else that's really important that's sort of been happening in the background on a national level. Is the government's strategy towards waste. Um, a lot of work has um, been going on with consultations with both local authorities. Um, companies, waste producers, reprocessers. About trying to find maybe a more sustainable and a better way to deal with the waste in the UK. Um, and what's come out of that is, what's really important is for the producers to have a bit more responsibility of the products that they put on the market. Because currently, they can put products on the market and they have no, um. They have no sight of what happens to that item, they don't have any costs relating to that, they just produce something, not really worry about what happens to it down the road. And it's the councils and the local authorities that are then dealing with these difficult to recycle items that we talked about earlier. Um, so the government's trying to work with industry so they can reduce the use of sort of the composite materials, which is so much harder for us to recycle. Um, so there's a lot of work going on in the background. And I think there's going to be some sort of changes to the way that. Um, local authorities are funded, so we might have more money from industry to be able to recycle more, which has always been something that councils have struggled with. Um, so hopefully, that's going to have sort of a really positive effect. And it will also also start to reduce the amount of unrecyclable products that are on the market. Um, so producers will be really thinking about how they design their products. Can that item be recycled when it's further down the line? And I think that's a really, really important thing um, to to be happening. Because we want those items on the market to be able to be easily recycled and we make it simple and easy for residents.
Absolutely. Um, and you've also got there the food waste campaign. And I think um, there's been, it's been a good collection, I think, it's done really well. Um, so I've heard, just conscious of time, Amy. Um, thank you everyone for joining. I'm just going to turn my video on again, Amy, if you'd like to do the same. And. We, I think the, just see my face again, the um. Key things that I've I've taken anyway from from this for residents to also take away is the idea of kind of. Donating or selling reusable items and making sure these items stay within the system, they stay being used and and valuable. Um, I also, the idea of reducing waste, actually not not buying those single use items in the first place. Um, but making sure that you reuse again. And then just recycling right, I guess. So making sure the right things are recycled, um, no contamination and that sort of thing. Would you agree with those those takeaways?
Yeah, no, I would. I think that's it's really important um, for people to understand what they can do to improve recycling rates. And, yeah. I think it's really, really, really important that people understand the impact, you know, if they don't recycle right and if they get it wrong. Um, and I think that's part of the process that, we know, we want to expand on that knowledge of people in the city and help. Them understand and have the confidence to recycle, that it goes to the right places. So, yeah.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much, everyone. I realize we're four minutes over, um, but thank you for joining us. And thanks, Amy, for answering our questions. And we didn't get round to answering the ones in the Q and A, but we'll do that offline and we'll make sure we share we share those. Um, and look out for the Blueprint Champions as well there. They're working hard behind the scenes and getting the uh, community involved. So thank you ever so much for all of our champions and their work so far. So thank you, everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening and have a good rest of your night.